Mount Vernon, today is Monday, July seventh, twenty twenty five, and this is our city council work session. We are currently waiting for the council members to show up, however, Councilman Potteet, you said you wanted to talk about something, or would you prefer to wait for the council members to come in? I want to wait for them, okay. We can get started with our tally sheet. We're going to go ahead with legislation and public works. And Councilwoman Gleason?
All right, thank you, Madam President. Item number one. Rose Wongisa Wakanda in ordinance authorizing the hosting of the Wakanda celebration twenty twenty five. That is going to be agenda pending. Item number two. Thomas J. Johnson ordinance authorizing the hosting of the Hilltop Give Back Hookout Community Events on August second. I see that all necessary departments weighed in on that, that's on agenda. Number three, Christ Apostolic Church in ordinance authorizing the hosting of a Gospel Outreach Special Religious Event on Saturday, August ninth. That is on the agenda. I see that all departments have weighed in on that. Item number four, Mayor's Office, Office of the Mayor in ordinance authorizing the Fourth Annual Hispanic Heritage Month Celebration on Saturday, September twentieth. That is on the agenda. Item number, again, all departments weighed in on that. Item number five, Department of Public Works, an ordinance authorizing the award of a contract for the resurfacing of various streets in the city of Mount Vernon for the years twenty twenty five through twenty twenty seven, that's on the agenda. Item number six, Department of Public Works, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an emergency contractual agreement with Zanzini Pipeline Inc. for sewer rehabilitation work at McQuestion and West Avonia and one fifteen Dell Avenue, that is on the agenda. Item number seven, Department of Public Works, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an emergency contract with Zanzini Pipeline Inc. for sinkhole repair at Beachwood and South Columbus Avenue, that is on the agenda. Item number eight, Department of Public Works, an ordinance authorizing the mayor enter into a contractual agreement with Zanzini Pipeline for emergency sinkhole repair at Mount Vernon Doll Center, that's on the agenda. Item number nine, Department of Public Works, an ordinance authorizing the award of a contract for very needed pest management and control services for various municipal facilities, that is on the agenda. Item number ten, Department of Public Works, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to amend the existing agreement with weather tight systems for emergency repairs to police station roofing, that's on the agenda. Item number eleven, Public Works, Department of Public Works, an ordinance authorizing the Department of Public Works to issue a request for proposal for tree maintenance and emergency services, that is on the agenda. Item number twelve, Department of Recreation, an ordinance authorizing the Department of Recreation to co-sponsor the reschedule at City Fest twenty twenty five, Business Food and Cultural Expo with the Friends of Mount Vernon Recreation and Youth Programs, Inc., and providing for necessary street closures, city services and support, that is on the agenda. Actually, I'm going to make that agenda pending. I have some questions regarding the street closures, police and auxiliary. Item number thirteen, Recreation, a Department of Recreation, an ordinance authorizing the Department of Recreation to co-sponsor the Back to School Backpack Event with Henry Allen and the Buddy White Project, that's on the agenda, always a great day. Item number fourteen, City Clerk, City Council, an ordinance authorizing the naming of the Department of Public Works yard located at thirty-three Canal Street as Juan Peralta Senior Plaza. That is on the agenda, and that is after our very dedicated DPW worker who was injured on the job and ultimately lost his life. Item number fifteen, City Clerk, City Council, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Mount Vernon, New York, honoring the life and legacy of Walter Allen Robinson, that is on the agenda. Then I have some add-ons, I believe. Item number twenty-two, Department of Public Works, an ordinance authorizing the transfer of funds for tree maintenance and emergency services, that item is being held. Item number twenty-three, City Clerk, City Council, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Mount Vernon, New York, recognizing and commending Sean Marshall, that is on the agenda. Item number twenty-four, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Mount Vernon, New York, renaming the theater at the Doll Center to Bettina Satin Theater. That is on the agenda, her name is spelled wrong on the agenda, we need to go back and fix that. I believe that is it, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gleason. Any questions for public safety, I mean, sorry, legislation and public work?
Um, I just have a point to make that we do have Rose Wongisa here from the Wakanda event. I think that if anybody has any questions, now would be the time to ask.
Actually, I want to wait for Councilman Thompson to come in because he said he has some information regarding that.
No problem.
Um, but, um, but in the meantime, for some of the items that you have, item number thirteen, just going, working backwards, um, that's the ordinance where we're co-sponsoring the, um, back to school event um, with the Buddy White Project, the PD's response says that there are two offices that should be hired, and is that going to be at the organizers' expense, or is that an expense that the city is paying?
Uh, that would be the organizers' expense, but I will go back and have an answer for you for Wednesday.
Okay, so my only concern is, or I want to make sure is for legal. If it is the organizers' expense, let's make sure we have that in the actual ordinance so that they're covering it, and that they cover it beforehand. Um, second is item number nine. Yes, I believe that this is a much-needed pest control, pest management item. Um, two questions, first being, do we have a plan for Oak Street and Station Five? Why are we hiring pest control for those two stations? Um, the second being, when are we going to do pest control for outside? Right, we need.
You mean, community-wide?
Community-wide. On to number seven. Um, so they said that this emergency was caused by Con Ed not backfilling properly. How are we going to make sure that Con Ed is reimbursing us for this expense?
Is that item number seven, you said?
Correct, item number seven, uh, where we hired the emergency guys to fix the backfilling. So if Con Ed didn't do it properly the first time, how are we getting reimbursed, and how are we going to make sure we prevent this in the future, I guess is the question.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, item number six, um, this is, so this is called an emergency procurement, but it's a concrete, concrete slab settling, right? So it's not sudden, it's not catastrophic in the sense where uh, emergency procurement is typically required, suddenly usually occurs gradually, not as an immediate public safety crisis. So I guess my question is, why aren't we doing inspections? Why didn't this come before council, before, you know, these things happen? Or, you know, I understand that there's structural liability risk, but those should be anticipated, right? And those should be budgeted, um, in our maintenance and repairs, rather than relying on emergency procurement.
So ultimately, why is this an emergency, and why should it be put forward?
Why, why didn't we know, and why do we have a maintenance schedule, like what, how are we upkeeping our infrastructure? Um, for item number three, there is no response from fire, the only response from fire that it says that uh, they need to call Bill, and so that they don't actually give a comment on the event. Um, and lastly, no, not lastly, this Thompson has come in and joined us with his, graced us with his presence. Um, item number two, this says it's requiring five cops on overtime, and similar to my other question, is the applicant covering the cost? Are five cops actually needed? Um, what has the crowd history been in the past? And it also says that emergency vehicles will need to be able to pass. So I want to make sure that that's built into the legislation as well. Um, that's for the Hilltop.
I'm looking at that, um, that's usually a very calm event, um, I have seen police officers out there before. I don't think it's necessary for five.
Well, that's what PD put in their response, so we need to touch base with them.
They get a nice, they get a nice turnout, um, they usually have it blocked off in between Third Street and Fourth Street, the upper part. But it's never really out of control or, or any, but if the police is saying they need five, um, I think, first of all, I'm not public safety in total, but personally, I think auxiliary police are just fine, and, and one police officer just to um, ensure safety.
I just, I would just like somebody to touch base with PD, right, their point of us getting these responses is so that we adhere to their advice, and if, if there needs to be a conversation before Wednesday, reminder that we only have one week.
Reach out to them sometime.
Uh, okay. And then lastly, we were waiting, you said you had some feedback on the Wakanda event, and I know we have, I don't want to butcher your name, Miss L, so I'm going to call you Miss L, if that's okay with you, is that all right? Rose, all right.
Wongisa.
All right, so, um, what was, what were the?
So I wasn't able to, um, contact all of the surrounding houses, I did speak to a few. Um, one, um, in particular said they didn't know anything about, um, you know, a petition going around, um, for a street closure. So I'm going to stop by, um, stop back by tomorrow, um, afternoon, um, just to get a little more clarity, um, because it is, it is a great event. We just want to ensure that we're not impeding on on property owners not being able to get into their driveways and things, like I spoke to you a couple of times over the phone. We just want to make sure that every resident, um, in the vicinity is okay with the event going on because last time, so many residents said that they couldn't get into their driveways, there was a bunch of trash left on their lawns and things of that nature. So we just want to make sure that, um, we're being, um, good neighbors to everyone, so, um, I don't know if you want to miss Rose to.
Sure, Miss Rose, come up, sure, can you come up to the mic, put it on for me?
Make sure you press the button.
Test the, yeah.
Screen, microphone?
See, look where I am, a little bring up there, touch that, on top.
All right, Deputy Clerk.
Right here? Okay, I have to keep on, I could just let it go?
Yeah, you can let it go.
Okay. Please, any of you have been to the event, I know Ed has been, Kathleen, and who else? Oh, you came last year, okay, perfect, okay, we're in the school, but then, as you know, we have zero funding and no support for Mount Vernon, from Westchester, Donald Trump, anyone, no support. And this weekend, I just came from Brooklyn. And we, as Black people, we're having a hard time with our cultural events, we're getting no support. Same thing with the International African House Festival in Brooklyn, so no support. So I've been doing this for eight years now, and I know there was a neighbor, a troublesome neighbor, who was friends with the judge here, so they did all these kinds of petitions, and some of the neighbors came back to me saying, we apologize for even putting up with this man, the man that lived on the corner. I forgot his name, he moved out, he moved to Delaware, he was the one causing all the problems. So, and then there's another lady too, that we came to your office, if you remember her, but I got petitions from people that support three seventy-five, three seventy-four, which is the corner property, that's me, then three sixty-six, and then the other people. And this is a cultural event, and it's for the children and for the people. And we, we feel as though we are always getting pushpats, and we don't need police. Last time, there was a fee, the police came and said, please, just go home because you're just wasting your time. And they came, they said, really, there's nothing here to really, to even look at, I mean, to really, um, uh, protect, because everything looks fine. We've never had a problem, you all know that, right? With Wakanda.
So, so question, when you say there's no funding, who were your funders in the previous years, and what are they doing now?
Last year, we had the AARP, American Rescue, that we go from the city. You remember that, right? From the city, A.
Yeah, the ARPA funds, and then you had Art, Art slash.
Five thousand, you see that, and the rest of the money I had to put in myself.
So every, everyone who helped fund last year is no longer funding this year?
No, no, no.
Is there a reason why everyone backed out?
Yeah, absolutely, there's no funding. Yeah, but I, I.
Did they give you a reason why they chose not to?
They sent an email, did I, I don't think I sent it out, the thing that, it's so many people that applied, and you're not getting money now, and so Wakanda is not getting anything. So I sent that email to Tyria Assemblyman, so he has that. So we really feel, I really like even getting tired of this fighting back and forth, because I have my culture and I'm fine. This is really for the community and the children, because if we don't have a culture, it could be a problem down the road, and the way the country is moving, is moving really not in the right direction. Debbie, can you come and say, this is Debbie.
Well, hold on.
If you don't mind, can you just say something?
I, I do want to, yeah, make a clarification, right, this isn't about the cultural event, we enjoy the cultural event, it's about the space, right? And that is one of the concern that's here, it's not about the event specifically, it's about where it's being held and the objections we've received in the past from residents, and it wasn't just one resident who's come in, it's been multiple residents who've come in to express concern. So as councilors, our job to kind of balance
Absolutely.
culture and the public safety and all of those things.
I agree.
Don't want you to feel like it's a personal attack.
I, I feel that way for something, but then also where we are cutting off is on Lenox, are you familiar with Lenox? You know, the, the pink house right there on the corner, we're not going by the school, but Tri-Pagan. Last time, you were from Tri-Pagan to me, but now we're making it very small, we're going to have maybe like hundreds of fifty-five people to two hundred people, and also the after-party is gone. You see that, we just decided today because it's just too much work, so that's one too.
When I spoke to you, you said you had one vendor, right?
Yes.
One vendor this year?
Ed, Ed.
And your expectation was under a hundred and fifty people?
Under two hundred people.
Okay, because, you know, sometimes if we, if we have an expectation of a certain amount of people, and then more than that amount comes and it spills over into, um, where you block a door, it's, yeah.
No, no.
It's sort of, you know.
It won't spill out, because usually, everything is happening right here on three seventy-five, and we're not even having a stage. We don't want no stage, we're going to put it on, on top of the hill, we don't want no stage.
And I offered, I offered, um, Brush Park to you as well, but you said Brush Park is not to your standard.
That one. I do not go on them.
Can you explain?
Why?
Why Brush Park?
The board said no, they don't want, no, no, it won't work, Brush Park will not.
Brush Park is actually twice the size of Tri-Pagan, so.
Oh, no, no, we don't want a bigger space, because even Tri-Pagan, we didn't have a lot of people. No, 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 we don't need a bigger space.
I just wanted clarification on why Brush Park wouldn't work at all.
You know what, many of our, um, the people that come through, they don't find it as safe, because we did a small survey, we're saying, can we maybe move even to Hartley Park, there's even a park closer towards Hartley. Brush is a little bit further, I said, how about Hartley Park? They said, someone just called me today, said, we cannot go to Hartley Park because they have homeless people there, they're, they're lighting up stuff and all that, I said, are you kidding me? They said, yes, it's not safe at all.
There are, there are events, um, that happen in Brush Park where there are hundreds of hundreds, thousands of people over there.
Yes, the.
And there are any incidents, um, you know, Brush Park has four baseball fields, it has, um, parking attached, it has a bathroom attached.
I've been there.
So, yes, I don't know what would be unsafe about it, but I just wanted to make sure that you know, y'all.
No, I know, I, I lived on three East Thirteenth in Mount Vernon when I first came to America, so I really, I know, I'm, I'm the South Side girl. I lived on three East Thirteenth, Mr. Brown's building, for many years.
Councilwoman Potteet?
Looking forward to the event, um, I was there last year, it was wonderful. Uh, what's the cost for using the school? Are they charging?
It was forty-five hundred.
Forty-five hundred?
Yes, and then I think it went up to fifty-five hundred. And, um, maybe they have to pay those customers, those, all those people and all that, yeah, so that's the price of the school. Yeah.
Um, Miss, you want to ask Debbie to?
Yeah, Debbie, say something.
Hi, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Okay, I'm Dr. Deborah Diamond, I'm on the Board of Directors with Cultural Celebration and with the Wongisa Gallery. Um, I just wanted to let you know and to clarify, we're only looking to shut off a very small area of Hawthorne Terrace, between Lenox, okay, and, um, Hawthorne, and on the corner of Euclid and Hawthorne, so it's really only going to affect maybe four houses in that entire area. Three sixty-six, three seventy-four, with three seventy-five, and, um, I forgot what the house is, that's next door to that.
Angel.
Angel, right, and Joy, but I, I don't know what the address is, unfortunately, so.
Clarification, our police department said that it was best if we actually block that street off, so the traffic flow affects more than just those four houses. Okay, speed walking, but.
Well, yeah, we have, yeah, we have the parking at Tri-Pagan, so we're not going to, you know, there, there won't be any parking over in that area, but what you're saying is people can access Lenox itself um, to go on up, it's only going to be right on the corner, right there of Hawthorne and Lenox right up against where, uh, three sixty-six is. But Lenox would be left open, so people can access and go up that way to get up to Columbus Avenue, or to get on to, what is it, the Cross, the Cross County? Uh, Cross County over there, and even eventually the Hutch.
Councilwoman Gleason?
No, um, the only thing that I have to say is, listen, I think this is a great, a great cultural event. I, I've been there from the first time that you had it just at your house. I, I also understand the importance of having it in that area because of the museum, right? But I do, you know, Councilman Thompson brings up a very good point, right? Uh, I don't know if it's for this year, but maybe for next year, we really have to look at a different area to do it in, and I think Hartley Park is the center of the city or Brush Park. Now, I agree with him when it comes to Brush Park because there is parking on site, which could actually open you up to a lot more vendors being, right? But, last year's event was probably the most spectacular that I've seen your event go. Um, so, you know, if there's no petition against having it in that small section of Hawthorne Terrace, you know, I, I mean, I haven't heard any, any, um, anybody fall against it at this point, but again, we'll wait until the public session on Wednesday, that could change. Um, but it is a holiday weekend. Access to people's houses, getting in and out on a holiday weekend kind of prevents them from having any celebrations in their own homes, so that's my only concern with it. Other than that, I fully support you, Rose, you know, I've been, I've been up to White Plains and a bunch of other places wherever you've been. I think what you do is really great, and I think it's very educational for the public.
Just a second, I just would like to mention one other thing too, we have this event listed on Eventbrite, so we are controlling the amount of people that will be able to attend this. We are not going to have the amount of forty-five hundred people like we've had in the past, okay? We have it limited to a certain number, once it hits that number.
Right, I understand that, but this has become such an event throughout Westchester that it will be very difficult to control the number of people that come in and, and leave. I get that you guys can control who the invites go out to, but once the word gets out on the street, it's, I mean, it was attended by a considerable amount of people last year, I remember, you know, Tri-Pagan's school's lawn being totally with people with lawn chairs and stuff like that, so I understand your intent, I just think that I'm not so sure that we can, that that can be controlled, and that's my only concern.
I didn't want to say something too, years ago, I, I've lived on Hawthorne Terrace for like twenty-eight years, and we used to have a block party there, do you remember that? Yeah, and we didn't have a problem, and actually, my neighbors came to me and said, we want to close out, uh, Lenox and have a block party. I said, you know what, I don't want to, you know, I will participate, but I will not be part of.
But with all due respect?
Yes.
Okay, this is not a block party supported by all the neighbors.
Yeah.
Okay, so remember, last year, well, not last year, two years ago, the amount of backlash on people's homes, they were not all in agreement with this, so this is a little bit different than having a block party, right? So, if you've got the support, I'd love to see that on Wednesday when we go into the public session, I would love to see the people that are directly affected by this, that they agree that, um, you know, you having this event does not, you know, infiltrate them in any way where they have any negative feedback from it. This is not, this is very different from a block party where everybody's in agreement.
Okay, but just make sure it's from Lenox to my corner, we're not impeding on to Tri-Pagan school. Yeah, so, and also we have the free parking at, in Tri-Pagan.
And also you said you'll be parking at Tri-Pagan store, is that at North Port, North Port?
Uh, they have a gift, but maybe it's only two hundred dollars.
Two hundred?
Two hundred, when they give us the bill, it's like two hundred dollars, which is really nothing, so they already approved it and we're fine. So we're going to have signs for everybody from Columbus down Lexington, straight into the school, the front and the back, so that's fine.
Any other, uh, comments from councilmembers? Potteet?
He counts president. Um, this is a long shot, Derek, is it worth talking to the school board, or to this, to the school board about waiving the fee, or is that impossible?
I don't think they would waive the fee, um, you know, I know Miss Rose would probably have to speak to them and, and see what kind of leverage can happen if they can, um, reduce the fee, but I don't, I don't see them waving the fee because they don't even wave the fee for some of the things that the U. Girl and other places are utilized. So I'm, I'm not even sure if they would, but you can see if they can reduce the fee for it, but then again, you would still need.
Yeah, last year they reduced the fee, but when you do the, the, the school, there's more, now you need security, you, you need, you need, you need money now.
Security, cleanup.
Yeah, yeah.
On-site, like, no matter what, you have to have somebody from maintenance working that day, and it's usually overtime.
Yeah, and then with the sounds, the sound you want eight thousand, so, but now we're just going to have regular small sound, the guy, the sound guy wants eight thousand, so. And then, obviously, we'll get the free county stage, our last ten gentens, you support, you know, you will support, the state went up to two thousand dollars, so that's not a problem, but for now, we don't want no stage, it's a small, you know.
Thank you for coming in, we appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Um, councilmember, are, is that agenda pending still, is it on the agenda, what is, what are we doing with that one?
I mean, I'm going to put it on the agenda, I would like Miss Rose to kind of go to your neighbors and see what kind of letters you could get to bring on Wednesday to the public meeting, to see, uh, you know, some supportive letters.
But I thought I already go, I.
I don't have the ones.
Oh, you're calling the email.
Oh, I didn't see it, I didn't see it, okay. Okay, my apologies, I didn't see it as an attachment. Okay, I didn't see that, so, I, I, I mean, we'll put it on the agenda, and I'll work with the clerk to look at the backup.
Thank you. Um, human resources?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Madam President. I have item number sixteen from Youth Bureau. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Startup Smarter for Mount Vernon Youth Bureau Safe Place for Girls Program. That's on the agenda. Item number seventeen from the Youth Bureau, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Troy Newby for the Mount Vernon Youth Bureau Safe Place for Girls Program. That's on the agenda. Item number eighteen from City Clerk, a resolution from the City um, Council of the City of Mount Vernon, New York, renaming the Mount Vernon Public Libraries Community Room to the Jade Gary Pretlow Community Room, and that's on the agenda. I don't have any add-ons.
Thank you, Councilman Thompson. There's no public and safety, public safety and codes uh legislation items, so we'll skip public safety and codes and go to finance. I didn't forget about you, um, Councilman Potteet. Finance and planning?
Um, okay, so this is number twenty? Yes, skip nineteen?
Oh, yeah, it should be nineteen. I get your point.
Um, Department of Assessment and Ordinance authorizing the amendment of ordinance number thirteen, adopted by City Council of June twenty fifth, twenty twenty five, entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for Catalyst Enterprise comma for professional services for thirty five thousand to include additional contract language and authorize execution of contract with Catalyst Enterprises comma. Um, it's gonna be agenda pending. I just wanted to make sure the controller is okay with this. Um, uh, we already proved this at the last meeting and um, I'm not sure why, well, I just speak to the assessor and um, what counsel about why it wasn't included?
Yeah, so what was included in this version is uh, they need, she needed an additional service.
Yeah.
That wasn't included in the last time, so um, they we held the one that went BOE so that she could adjust this one to add the additional services.
So did did the controller say that this was okay? I mean, that that was my only question at this point.
Wait, when you say okay, what do you mean by that?
This, we weren't intended to spend this in this this fiscal year, that's why, and.
Yeah, so I believe if it was in her budget uh that we can spend.
Um, is it?
Yeah, I mean, typically the controller doesn't have say over.
No, but is it, is it, is it, is it in the budget? That's what, that's my question.
Oh, I I believe so. If it's coming out, it it gives a line, right?
All right, so I mean, that's a quick conversation. So, all right, that was my only question. Um, so I guess uh, we can move forward. Um, yep, and number twenty one, uh, Department of Planning and Community Development, uh, an ordinance authorizing adoption of the program here, Consolidated Plan of twenty twenty five to twenty twenty nine, Consolidated Plan and twenty twenty five Action Plan. That's gonna be on the agenda.
Okay, um, any questions for finance and planning? Any question for human resources? Um, all right, new business, Councilman Potteet, you wanted to address something?
Uh, thank you, guys. Um, in our last meeting, um, on June twenty third, June twenty fifth, there was an item uh for the public safety and codes from buildings. Uh, and ordinance authorizing the establishment of time limits on dormant buildings department application. I asked the commissioner to be here today to discuss the application. I know there were issues around if buildings is asking clients for a set timeframe. Buildings itself should have a set timeframe as to how they look at application, which is only fair. Do we have anyone on buildings online with Second Commissioner Dawn?
Yes.
So uh, if you could speak to this and why first, it's important for buildings to have this passed. And secondly, what provisions buildings is making to timely look at applications from applicants?
So it is important to have this passed because.
Who are we speaking to?
This is Deputy, Second Deputy Commissioner Don Ez.
Thank you. Be soon. Go ahead.
Um, it's important to have this passed, um, because we have a lot of uh backlog applications that have not moved in years, and they're just sitting open. Um, and i- in, even after um contacting the applicants, we're not getting any responses. So you have applications that are sitting dormant for years with no activity. Um, Buildings Department is dedicated towards uh making sure that we um check every application within the thirty day time period of it being submitted. Um, there are also applications that are submitted that aren't, where the fees are not paid, and the fees have never been paid. And they're there for multiple months and in some cases, years.
Okay, um, thank you for for that. And then to the second part of the question. If we're telling applicants that if their application is there for six months, that it may go dormant, what guidelines does the staff have to make sure that we're getting comments to applicants in a timely manner? Because something that council members brought up is if it takes five months to get comments back to applicants, and we're gonna have them go dormant after six, then it's not quite fair to the applicant that that timeframe is only six months.
Correct. Um, so the um, like I said, we are going to, we're implementing where we will um review all applications within the first thirty days of receiving them, and the six months will not start until after the first comment from uh clerk. So in other words, if it takes us thirty days or six months to respond, the, if, if we do not hear back from the applicant within uh six months of the, of us initiating communication with them, not, um, so that way it will be fair to them. They have six months from us communicating with them.
So is it possible that thirty day window, you could put that in the legislation?
Yes.
So that applicants can reference it if they want to say, you know, that we just want to make sure, again, if there's an issue, we get in comments in thirty days, that the applicants also have recourse. So can we put that in the legislation?
Yes.
Thank you.
Madam President.
Councilman Thompson?
Hi, uh, this is Councilman Thompson. I um, I support this legislation for the Building Department because I do think it will be beneficial. My only problem is, well, my only issue is, um, in the, in the wording, the verbiage says that if their, their um agreements can be terminated without any notification. So that's the thing that we would have to change within the uh legislation itself. Uh, as Potteet said, you know, given, if we have the verbiage saying that they have a specific timeframe, um, where if the Building Department was getting to them within two months or something like that, saying, hey, or in in four months, if this isn't taken care of, it will be um terminated. And then give them a thirty days because, uh, you know, once it's terminated, they have to start back at ground one, and it's costing them money, right? So now they will be lost um funding, and then they would have to start all over again. So we don't want, we don't want it to be a waste of time for the Building Department and the resident.
Madam President?
Councilwoman um Gleason?
I just want to tag on to that. Uh, one of my biggest concerns was that after, after six months, you know, there would be no notification like what Councilman Thompson just said, and there would be a loss of the application fee to the resident. Also, what I'm concerned about is that we're putting these matrix out on applicants, yet we're still not a hundred percent on the matrix on Department of Buildings. So just to be completely transparent, I won't be supporting this legislation. Uh, I I think that this is, I think in the future, there might, this might be something that's done, but I don't think that you guys are, uh, the Department of Buildings is in a place yet to put that, that type of limitations on applications at this point.
Councilman Potteet?
Um, in defense of the legislation, um, this has been a problem since I've been on council with buildings. Uh, that they're spending an inordinate amount of time on old applications. And so we're beating them up as council, applicants are beating them up, saying, we want you to go through your applications fast. Resources are limited, and so the commissioner did, um, looking forward, say, okay, if I can pull resources from looking at dormant applications, then I'll be able to process the applications quickly. Uh, I get the issues that council has, but if we don't pass this, then buildings will still be shocked with spending a lot of time and limited resources looking at applications that applicants may or may not be responding to, may or may not even care.
Uh huh. Madam President?
Hold on. Um, I I, I'm not sure I'm following. Uh, you said they're spending in in order an amount of time on old application, doing what? What exactly are they doing with those old applications?
Right, so can I take on to that?
Councilwoman Gleason, let him answer, please.
Yep, but yeah, I'll let the second Deputy Commissioner.
Okay, DC Asbury, can you comment on that, please?
So with the old application, we have to, one, take time to go through them one by one. And the current process, um, we have to write a letter, send it certified mail to the applicant and uh to get their permission to close the application. If if we don't hear from them, then the application stays open. If we hear from them, then it's uh, and they say to close it, then we're able to close it. So we have another process where we're waiting on an applicant who may or may not care whether or not the application's open. And it makes our backlog look like it's larger than what it actually is.
So I I get the question is, how much time are we spending actually sending out those certified letters? And what are the responses? What's the ratios on responses to close versus, oh, I didn't hear from you all? Like, what, what does that data look like?
So I know that we are sending out, um, I don't have the exact number, but I know we're sending out several letters every week. Um, and we may hear back from.
What was the number?
I don't have the exact number, but I know that we sent out at least a minimum of ten letters a week. Um, and that's just um with one resource going through the list of um applica- of uh, of um, old applications, and we may hear back from one or two.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gleason.
Yeah, uh, you know, Councilman Potteet said that there is a a a distinct amount of time that's being spent on these applications. I don't think that we've been given any type of factual information to support that. You know, I mean, we can hear it. I think in the reports that have been coming to us for the last few months, I didn't, I didn't hear anything about an exorbitant amount of time being spent on these dormant applications. I think that time gets spent on the dormant application when an applicant calls. I don't think, I I if, listen, if if uh certified letters are being being uh sent out, and you know, there's a three or four, you know, point of communication where somebody is not communicating back, then I think a letter should go out to them and say, hey, you know, where are you at this point? If not, then at that point, terminate the application and refund the money back. You know, but at this point, I I I don't think an awful lot of thought has been gone into this process where we've been given an enough amount of in- information to make, uh, you know, a calculated decision on this. But that's just, you know, I'm one of five. That's how I feel.
And just another question for you, the Councilman Potteet or DC Asbury, um. So typically, the clerks are going through the the new applications, right? Is there no ability to put an alert in the system when an application has been dormant to indicate that a a letter needs to be sent? And can it not be sent by an office manager or secretary or someone other than the clerk? So that we're not utilizing resources that can be used on new applications that are in the system?
Um, that is what is currently being done. The office manager sends the letter.
So I guess I'm confused about how that resource is being taken away from responding to new applications.
Um, in addition to that, she also, she is also a part of the application process. She is um part of the application closing process, so she does all of the um paperwork for closed um C of O's and uh and letter of completions, and there are some other things that she does as well.
Thank you. Councilman Potteet?
Yeah, just trying to find a place of comfort for everybody. Um, what's stopping buildings? And I get Councilwoman Gleason's point, which is uh, an applicant is working through the process. It's now month seven. They would lose their application fee. Uh, and they're crying to one of us, saying that they haven't heard from buildings for six months. But why does buildings have to work on old application? And just to, just to say it a different way, if you've reached out to the applicant, you've given them comments after thirty days, which you're gonna put in the legislation anyway. If the applicant doesn't get back to you, is it possible you could put it in a dormant file where buildings isn't working on it? Um, but it's not dead, and if the applicant comes back and says, you know, I'm sorry, it's been a year, right, but I would like to reopen the application, then it could go from the dormant file to the reopen. Is that a possibility, or am I just kind of making it worse um than it is now?
So there is a way to put applicants, applications on hold, which would be similar to dormant. Um, however, those uh applications aren't actively worked on when they're on hold. So the only way it would be reactivated is if the applicant does come back. However, it it technically adds to the backlog because then now you have an old application that could be anywhere from a year, two years, three years old. And then you're basically starting from scratch anyway, because any documentation that they've submitted would have expired.
Councilwoman Potteet?
So I get your point, but when you're reporting to council, and if you simply say, you know, here's our backlog, it's a thousand applications, let's say. Um, and out of a thousand nine hundred and ninety are because of this issue, right? The applicant has responded, we gave them comments, we haven't heard anything. So here's the backlog, and it's large. But this backlog, ninety eight percent of it is made of old applications where we're waiting for comments from the applicant. Could that work for buildings, or again, am I missing something?
So, um, the only problem that I see with that, and this is where it it gets to be kind of problematic, is where you'll have an old application where an applicant hasn't responded for a year. And then what'll happen is they'll come in and say, oh, I've been waiting a year, and nothing has happened, and buildings is holding up my application. But you find out when you look at the application, it's because they haven't submitted something that we've asked for over a year ago. And it just, it ends up being, I guess, what's the word for it? Um, it ends up being a a problem when you have a, it kind of just, it just doesn't really help with the. I'm sorry, um. Yeah, I'm trying to find my words, but yeah, it just basically, it 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 ends up being a problem. Um, especially when you have uh, you have uh applicants who already have a a attitude when, or an I, you know, a certain um bias against the Building Department, because I know that in the past, the the history of the Buildings Department is that we don't get anything done, but we're working on that. And uh having all this backlog and having to um basically put those on hold, and then you have to pretty much kind of jump back in and then try to catch people up, and then they feel like you're taking them through the wringer. Like, oh, you're just making me do everything over. And but what they don't realize is that, you know, things expire, things change, especially if they're trying to change who the um, the the vendor that they're using or the contractor that they're using. And sometimes it's not possible to use the same application because of, like, like I said, things change and uh things expire. So it becomes an even bigger problem, especially when, you know, um, an applicant comes back a year or two later and everything that they've submitted isn't viable.
Thank you.
Councilmembers, anyone else? Councilman Boxer?
Yeah, um, the the exact situation you just described is, is was my issue with the the legislation last time we spoke, um, the last meeting, because here you have a situation where there's a miscommunication between the, um, the applicant and the buildings department. They believe that the building department is working on their application and you're saying they're missing something, yet you're able to um, cancel their application, they forfeit their, 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 um, fees and there's no notice provided. So I'm really uncomfortable with something like that being, uh, possible, so.
Councilman Thompson?
I said my only issue was just the, um, communication with the applicant. You know, I, I understand that the applicant is already attached to the contract that they're using so they can actually see where they are in line with things. Um, but I just don't want our applicants to lose out on money. Um, I, whether it was a penny or a dollar, I just don't want anyone to lose out on money without notification. So if there was a way that we put in our verbiage, this is what's taking place. They've been notified through email and as well as a phone number, attach that phone number. So if, if six months pass and then they come in and say, I never was notified, whatever the case may be, you could actually verify on this date, I sent you this email. On this date, I also gave you this phone call to this number. As long as there's some, you know, checks and balances with that, I would support this, um, legislation.
Any other council members? Uh, yeah, so DC, I, you know, I, I think we have a trust issue with the buildings department, um, with residents, with me. Um, and I think this will add to the trust issue and until we can get the buildings depart- department running like a well-oiled machine, I think, um, you know, this isn't a legislation that we should move forward with, in my personal opinion. But as my council members say, I am one of five, um, but I do appreciate you staying late to get on the Zoom. And I guess Councilman Potteet will let us know if he's putting this on for Wednesday or not because there's only one meeting in July.
I think there's a compromise here that could work for everyone, but it's not gonna happen, I don't think, Wednesday. So I'll talk to the commissioner, give him the feedback here. It's just a minor tweak that he has to make and then get this back on.
Fantastic.
Councilwoman Gleason?
Uh, just one, one thing I would like to reiterate is I, I would support this in the future. I just don't think that this is the right time right now. And I think that that's very important. I think that it's not a simple treat. I think that there's a lot of things that have to, like there has to be a matrix in place, like how many times they reach out, how many, how many times a certified mail, how many signatures have come back, how many phone calls have been made? And granted, I get that that's labor intensive, but again, we're not looking to hurt a resident in any way. And the way that this is structured right now, they lose money, okay? And in the same respect, like I said, the last meeting, I am still fielding phone calls on a daily basis regarding the Department of Buildings and their timely response. Now, have they gotten bet- better since four years ago? Absolutely. Okay, they're definitely working towards, uh, you know, a, a, a better department. You know, but a- as it stands right now, we're still getting current complaints about, you know, responsiveness and it's not so much what we have given the Department of Buildings. I think that they've implemented everything. A lot of it has to do with human error, right? And I think just now is just not the right time to implement this.
All right. Thank you. Any comment from council members not regarding this legislation, but anything else? Awesome. Well, tonight has been great. Mount Vernon, we will see you on Wednesday for our only July meeting, um, at seven P M. Um, see you then.